I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Cummings. Mr. Goswami.
Yes.
Ms. Gwos.
Yes.
Mrs. Herrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hong. Dr. James. Mrs. Reese.
Here.
And President Lacks.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance to the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the East Brunswick Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. I am going to ask for a motion where as the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exception to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. Those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that this discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Move by Mrs. Becker, second by Mrs. Gwos. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you, we shall see you in an hour. Okay, and welcome back and welcome to our visitors. Very excited to have you here. This is a treat for us and a treat for you tonight, right? So you're gonna get to see a little bit about how a board works and you're gonna get to hear from a student from the high school as well. But before we get to that, I'm gonna ask Dr. Valeski to give the superintendent's report for you guys.
Thank you, President Lacks. Good evening, everyone. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Warren Storfer Elementary School. The art teachers of these talented students are Alana Trainer and Takara Naimichi. Joseph Sattari is the principal. On Friday, November 1st, all student assistants, specialists, nurses, counselors, and secondary certificated staff and administrators participated in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, our professional development facilitated by the Center for Supportive Schools. The goal of this training was to foster school cultures where everyone feels valued, included, and welcomed. The K-6 student assistant specialist who attended the training on November 1st will turnkey this critical information to all K-6 staff. On Wednesday, November 13th, the Special Education Department and the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, also known as, what you may have heard, CPAG, hosted a resource fair. Families were able to explore local resources for East Brunswick families. The fair included recreational activities, therapeutic resources, transition information, legal services, and more. As an added benefit, the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office was in attendance with a registration table for families to add their child to the special needs registry, which will help first responders better assist in emergency situations. On Thursday, November 14th, Chittuck Elementary School celebrated and honored our veterans during a special assembly. Each grade level presented family heroes with songs and poems that symbolize our gratitude to our heroes. The High School Sources of Strength Group visited Hammer Shoal to share their personal stories of strength. They focused on how healthy activities, mentors, positive friends, and caring for their own mental health helped ease difficult times. The peer leaders then went into classrooms to lead a Kahoot, which is a game-based learning platform, and that ended the day with lunch and recess. At Churchill Junior High School, Celine Clark's ninth-grade honors English classes hosted a virtual author's visit from New York Times bestselling author and 2024 MacArthur Foundation Genius Grant Award winner Jason Reynolds. This was graciously funded by the East Brunswick Education Foundation and along with 300 other schools across the country. The students listened to Reynolds' talk about writing with author Kwame Alexander. In preparation for the visit, students were able to explore important social themes such as identity, racism, and resilience through protocol-based discussions and writing while reading stories written by Reynolds and Alexander. His visit provided an opportunity for open conversations about these issues, helping students to develop empathy and a deeper understanding of the world around them. I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the parents who visited their children's school for American Education Week. Parents were able to see firsthand the high-quality teaching provided by our talented teachers and supported by our innovative administrators. In sports, two high school seniors signed their national letter of intent. Samantha Arnold signed her national letter of intent to Rutgers University for field hockey. Dezora Diaz signed her national letter of intent to St. Peter's University for track and field. Congratulations to all of the, or to both of them. Congratulations to our October High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and of course, for modeling exceptional character. Our new girls softball and field hockey complex is close to full completion. So this is gonna be an important word. It's called GMAX testing of the synthetic turf field was recently completed. And this testing measures the impact attenuation. That's the ability of the playing surface to absorb a shock. So when a player falls, how much is that going to hurt? That's from a collision or anything else that happens on the field. There are also some other, some other items in process before the site can officially be turned over to the district. And these include the installation of handrails, security gates, ballstop netting, and of course, our important security systems. We are also awaiting testing and certification of the sound system and the scoreboards. So while the project may appear to be complete, there continues to be work to be done. But this picture is a very good example of later this, I believe that was, Mr. Giuliana, that was later this summer, right?
I'm sorry?
That, that picture was taken later this summer.
That was, yes.
And so that's a very good example of, we do have some landscaping that's been installed down below. Anything else, Mr. Giuliana, that's been, been changed from that picture?
I'm just looking, I'm just looking over in the far left. It looks like there's dirt mounds over there. I think that's now grown in with grass. But that mostly looks close to what it is now.
But we are looking forward to dedicating this facility and having it ready for our girls' teams in the upcoming season.
Looks great.
So it's gonna be awesome. The East Brunswick Education Association held a denim day this month to honor Veterans Day. EBEA members along with the district staff raised $2,000 to help support VFW Post 133 and the Wounded Warrior Project. Each holiday season, Barnes &amp; Noble organizes a book drive to support a local organization. In this year, East Brunswick Public Schools was chosen as the beneficiary. The new books collected will enhance our teacher classroom libraries. And the book drive is currently underway and will continue until December 12th. So thank you to Barnes &amp; Noble. The East Brunswick High School Drama Club is proud to present Save Hamlet. The production will run Friday, November 22nd, and Saturday, November 23rd at 7:00 p.m. and Sunday, November 24th at 3:00 p.m. And as always, tickets can be purchased at ebhsdrama.org. Believe it or not, first quarter report cards can be viewed online through Parent Access tomorrow, and that's Friday, November 22nd. Hard copies will be made available at the request of anyone without internet access. Just a few important reminders. Wednesday, November 27th is a single-session day with lunch served for students in grades K through 6. Schools will be closed on Thursday, November 28th and Friday, November 29th for the Thanksgiving break. And I would like to wish the East Brunswick community a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. How do you do, guys? Good? Yeah? You're gonna do better, right? Oh, see, they're collapsed.
They know they're gonna do better.
I have faith.
I already gave them a 10.
So Dr. Valeski had mentioned American Education Week, and we have a resolution of appreciation. Whereas, public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas, by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas, public education employees, be they administrators, teachers, health and student service workers, librarians, custodians, bus drivers, clerica workers, food service professionals, skilled trade workers, security guards, technical employees or substitutes, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas, public schools encounter encouraged community by bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials for a common purpose, now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education proclaims November 18th, do 22nd, 2024 as American Education Week. Move by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Herrick. And Doctors and Vicky, I thought I saw you somewhere here.
And her team.
And her team. And I actually saw Mr. Will Jermouth.
You wanna vote?
But, oh. Well, we have discussion.
Yes, this is true.
I'm gonna, so, let's see, Florence. So before I come and give this to you, I'm gonna ask, all those in favor? Abstention, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Sorry about that, guys. I went a little out of order. But thank you all. We really do appreciate you doing all that you do for our students. And any of you, did your, did your parents get to come and into your classes this week? For our friends that are here? Yeah? You enjoy that? I'm gonna give this to you.
Congratulations, very much. Thank you.
She's got the Steelers colors on. So for you guys, that big tall guy in green when my daughter was in the district, that was one of her favorite teachers. See, things for you to look forward to. But right now is the, one of the things that I look the most forward to, when we have learning across the district. Because you brighten up our days. You show everybody what is going on in our schools, how well you're doing, how amazing your teachers are in preparing you for things like this. So our friends at Frost Elementary School are going to be highlighting their school-wide climate events from November and sharing their galaxy of gratitude. Is that correct? All right, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do any more spoilers. I'm gonna ask you to come on up. And Lindsay's gonna tell us what we got.
Thank you. I'm gonna even step on this. Okay. Hello. So, as you know, I'm Lindsay Legori. I am the East Brunswick Education Association's PEP Chair who helps organize these events. And tonight, I am proud to have our third and fourth graders here to help present to you, along with all of my amazing colleagues, who's filling the back of the room. So thank you so much. So our school-wide theme for the 2024-2025 school year is Frost is Out of This World. Every month is a different focus depending on what events are happening. We hold a Frost Family Meeting at the beginning of each month, where the whole school comes together to find out what our focus is. In September, we lifted off to learning. In October, we were launching into a peaceful school year. This month, in November, our theme is Galaxy of Gratitude. And here are some of our third and fourth grade Frost students to share how we showed gratitude to our veterans this month.
Veteran, with, veterans who are family members of Frost staff and students were invited for our Veterans Day celebration. The school that, we started off with the ve- ve- breakfast to welcome our veterans. The, the media center was decorated in red, white, and blue shades made by our student council.
After, after breakfast, after breakfast, there's, their family members, after breakfast, students escorted their, their family members to the, to the gym. For our assembly, our veterans were introduced and then student council members, members read a poem to them.
Teachers and students brainstormed questions for our guests before the assembly. We spent some time asking veterans some of our questions. It was very interesting.
Some things we learned from our veterans are that it was very hard to get anywhere close to eight hours of sleep. Also, in order to keep in touch with friends and families, some veterans wrote letters, letters and could mail them for free. All they had to do was write the word "free" where a stamp would normally go. One veteran shared that he was able to call his friends and family because his unit had a lot of money.
We learned that the veterans often had challenging drills in the middle of the night. One of the veterans shared they handled the fear of fighting by knowing that their partners always had their backs. Lastly, we learned some veterans were drafted while others joined the military voluntarily.
Nope, not yet, not yet.
After they answered our questions, some of Frost students presented, presented our guests with cards that we made them, we made for them. Cards we created earlier in the month with buddy classes. A buddy class is usually when an older grade class is paired with a younger grade level class to do some activities that go along with the monthly focus.
Our art teacher, Ms. Como, worked with the students to create amazing artwork for the East Brunswick VFW. The artwork was inspired by the American artist Jasper Johns to conclude the celebration. Our music teacher, Ms. Camp, led the school to a patriotic song, Proud to Be an American. It was a day to remember.
So we have a nice little presentation to show you of our day celebrating our veterans.
Each day we welcome three of our veterans. The reason for this week of conference is that we're so we celebrate our veterans on the 11th of November. We thank them for their courage and courage always.
I want to first and foremost, I want to thank our Frost community for coming out tonight to support, you know, even though the emails came out to make sure you're here. But I know that you will always come out for our students because we are definitely a family. Ms. Legori, Ms. Schwam, Ms. Como, thank you so much for all that you did to make sure this project kind of went out, went off without a hitch. But tonight, we were able to provide you with a glimpse of the amazing events that take place at Frost. As a school community, it's important to show our students the meaning of gratitude and to thank those who have given so much to us. The Veterans Day Celebration is just one of the many activities that take place during the month of November, where our students are able to learn more about their community members and just to say, thank you. I hope you enjoyed our presentation tonight. Students, you know I am always so very proud of you. You did an amazing job. Please know that we always have to come and do it the Frost way. And we hope you enjoy our presentation. And we have one more part that's extra special.
We want to thank the Board, the Board of Education members for having us tonight. Can everyone please stand up to conclude our presentation the same way we conclude our Frost Family Meetings with our Frost mantra?
We are Frost. We are family. We are group models. We are optimistic. We are smart. We are talented. We are number one.
Yes, wanna take a picture?
Hello, I'm Julia, Julia Komcinski. I'm the art teacher at Frost. And the week before and the week of Veterans Day, week or day, we created poppy-inspired artworks. Students had a brief introduction to Moina Michaels, who created the idea of poppies being a symbol for remembrance of our veterans. And we created artworks showing the texture of ground to represent the hard earth that poppies are able to grow through and to show their resilience and how their resilience is like our resilience of our strong veterans. So we made these poppy flowers. Second graders used a lot of texture with tissue paper. And our third and fourth graders learned to do a layered poppy flower with two, two kind of bowtie-looking petals.
Okay, Michael, we are. And I would be honored if I could take a picture. And this guy.
Good job, everyone.
So you guys got to see that heroes walk amongst us, right? Some of you even had those heroes in your family. I think that's beautiful. And I love that you shared that with us. And I'm gonna call a brief recess. But before I do and let you guys go home to finish any homework or whatever you get to do at 8 o'clock at night, I have a special treat for you. My friend Rishi over there is a high school student. And he is going to share with you what's been going on at the high school. So give you a little bit of a glimpse into your future.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It was wonderful to see you guys go up and present. I myself went to Frost, so it was wonderful to see. Things are definitely still the Frost way. So that was amazing. But it's been a while since we last met, but I, last met, but I have a lot of important news and information that I'm excited to share. I want to start off by congratulating all the fall sports teams on an amazing year. We had multiple teams qualify for states and performed very well. Most notably, our girls tennis team, who won state sectionals. Talking to, talking to senior captain of the boys cross-country team, Samar Lamba, he says, finishing my final season of cross-country was a bittersweet moment for me. And I'll miss that dynamic and exciting atmosphere brought. But I am grateful for the memories and lessons the sport has given me. As we look forward towards, towards the winter season, teams will be kicking things back into full gear following Thanksgiving break. Not only will they be burning off those Thanksgiving calories, but they will be engaging in team bonding activities and scrimmages against local towns. Some major events have happened at EBHS since the last meeting, including student council's annual homecoming. With 700-plus tickets sold and 800 attendants, my fellow peers all agreed that this is one of the best student homecomings within the last year. As president, hearing that, I just had to give myself a pat on the back. Nonetheless, this event would not have been possible without the tireless efforts of all the students and staff involved. On the day prior to homecoming, students lined the terminal hallway, putting their best efforts on display during hallway decorating. Watching each class get fired up and competing to have the best decorations was truly a sight to see. Unfortunately for the sophers and juniors, the seniors put on a dominant display and walked away with the title of Best Hallway Decorations. The East Brunswick Education Foundation Student Association ran their annual 5K Bear Crawl this past weekend, and it was a huge success. The Student Association had about 50 volunteers helping out with planning the event, running sign-ins, cheering on the runners, and even running in the race. The EB Education Foundation and Student Association worked cohesively to make this community-wide event as successful as possible. Students at the high school have gotten a firsthand look into the amazing things that EBEF provides. The event had over 500 runners from across the community and has been the most successful date to, to date, most successful event to date. Junior and president of the Student Association, Tasneen Barsbai, says, "It was fun seeing all the members of the community come together and seeing the efforts of volunteers were amazing. I can't wait till next year." Looking ahead towards promising events, tomorrow, the EBHS Drama Club will be putting on their annual winter production, performing the play Save Hamlet. Senior and president of the Drama Club, Mia Rosin, says, "The Drama Club, Drama Club has cast and crew has worked so hard to put on their production of Save Hamlet. After many long rehearsals and builds, they are ready to put on their production on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Come out and see the show." Personally, walking by the auditorium daily, it is truly a spectacle to see the amazing sets they have handcrafted. If you are free this weekend, please take the time to watch the hard work of these students on display. Finally, next Tuesday at the high school, the girls will take on the gridiron and the boys will be on the sidelines during NHS's Annual Anderson Bowl. Senior and president Sahil Kochhar says, "It'll not only be a member- Senior and president Sahil Kochhar says, "It will not only be a memorable high school experience, but also a show of compassion, as all the proceeds are going to this Leslie Anderson Scholarship Fund and the St. Jude's Children Hospital." Students are excited to support a good cause and watch their fellow classmates cheerlead and play football. Personally, not only am I excited to watch the game, but I'm even more amped up for the Chick-fil-A that will be provided on Tuesday night. With holiday festivities approaching next week, I want to wish everyone happy Thanksgiving and a great holiday. There are many things I am thankful for, including this great opportunity to speak at the Board of Ed meeting and meet with all the cherished members of our community. Thank you.
All right, our Frost friends. Did your Frost alumni here? Did he do you proud? All right, so a couple of years, maybe some of you will kind of eye that seat then. Thank you very much. You get better and better. Every report, we had quotes this time, this was really impressive. And now I understand why, because he came from the Frost family, because you were all very well spoken. So I am actually going to call for a brief recess, about three minutes, board members, so that you guys can maybe take a couple of pictures with your parents and head home. You are more than welcome to stay, but I understand the late hour. Feel free to exit at your leisure. We'll see you back in a few minutes. There we go, and we're back. Hard to follow that, correct?
True.
That is my favorite, and I am so appreciative. I think, did Lindsay leave? Oh, okay. So you'll tell her, these are the best. Learn Across the District is absolutely the best, right? We are incredibly grateful for it. And I did not know you went to Frost, and I would have had you up there with them had I known that, so.
President Lacks, before you open, go to the cause.
Yes.
Could I make a statement for the record, just for the public domain, just to correct what we believe is a misstatement on social media?
Sure.
From time to time, we're made aware of things that are posted at a variety of social media sites. We were made aware today that there was a post that alleged that one of our members of the Transportation Department did not have a valid CDL license and had been transporting students without the proper credentials. I want to assure the community that that is not correct, that the individual that was referenced in the post does in fact have a valid CDL license, and I just wanted to state that for the record, so there won't be any further miscommunication about it.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that, that's very important. Thank you. We are up to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by a first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. You will have three minutes to speak to the board. I always like to remind people, this is a time to speak to the board. If there's anything that needs follow-up, I will ask you to leave your information with the ladies in the front, and they will be sure to get back to you. And that being said, is there anyone this evening that would like to speak to the board? Randy, come on up. And I'm just going to ask everyone, when you get to the microphone, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Randy Gagnon. I'm 17 Buffalo Run, proud Frost family. Vice president of the East Brunswick Education Foundation. I'm here on behalf of Jack Levitt. He's away on vacation to report some news. We just finished our big grant season. At our last meeting, the Grants Committee presented us with just over $47,000 in grants that they approved. In that group, there were several grants that spanned over the whole district, so every school is getting something this round. As always, the grants are creative and wide-ranging in scope. We had a grant for an AI app to help early readers. We have a Shakespeare company coming to perform A Midsummer Night's Dream for our eighth graders, and a gym game that can be used to build different skills at each school. And this fall, we will be giving away our three-millionth dollar. We plan to celebrate by presenting the recipient with a big check in a bit of a surprise ceremony, which I believe Dr. Valeski and some others will be attending. We're also coming off a hugely successful Bear Crawl, which featured over 560 runners and all ages and raised over $17,000. Huge shout-out to the Dream Team that made this happen, the district's own Meg Fisher and Katie Metasevsky. We're hoping to see you all next year with your running gear, please, this time. Reminder, Barnes &amp; Noble's book fair is coming up shortly, December 7th and 8th, just in time for the gift-giving season. Finally, we've re-energized our Facebook, Instagram. Please like us and follow us. You can track the events if you'd like to attend and see all the grants we have awarded in action. Thank you again for your time, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Randy. And thank you for all that the Education Foundation does for the district. It's greatly appreciated. Oh, I thought Bill was coming to speak. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, I did too.
You faked us out. Hi, come on down.
Allegra Seidler, 12 South Woodland Avenue. Those of you who have read my forwarded correspondence with upper administration are likely aware that myself and several other parents across the district are significantly concerned with the quality of our language arts curriculum. Our Tier One curriculum is based primarily on Fountas and Pennell and Lucy Cawkins Units of Study, also known as Moss Flower. Copious amounts of literature spanning decades exists explaining the numerous issues with both of these products, including the revision. For those who are hearing about this for the first time tonight, to summarize, the district curriculum, often referred to in whole as Balanced Literacy, is outdated, not rooted in the science of reading, and is known to be academically harmful. It does not appropriately identify struggling readers. It does not foster sufficient growth, and it is being removed from schools across the nation with phenomenal success. I have requested further information regarding the district's 2023 decision to purchase the revised units of study immediately after its contentious publication and despite the nonexistent data showing success, the creator of which denied all evidence that any changes were indicated for at least two decades. The district has been unable to sufficiently provide responses regarding what other curriculum was considered, how much this revised edition cost, why parents were not explicitly informed that a new curriculum would be implemented, or what the current MTSS data shows about how our curriculum is serving our children. Furthermore, in my quest to obtain such information, I discovered the district appears to be woefully out of compliance with the State Gifted and Talented Law from 2020. Administration asserts that the differentiation supplied by the aforementioned Tier One curriculum is sufficient to act as a gifted and talented program for lower grades. Seeing as the law requires a formal program with publicly posted criteria, this very clearly does not qualify. All things considered, the current curriculum is a hindrance to students of all levels. This would be incredibly apparent if teachers were empowered to speak freely with parents and voice their concerns to administration without fear of retaliation. While that's a story for another day, I am pleading with you to please look into this. There are many parents and educators who know too well the damage it is causing. In communication with the district, I was told that Fountas and Pennell have been in use for 15 years. In that time, we have added plug after plug in an attempt to fill the holes in this curriculum. Hegarty, Foundations, Limited Orton-Gillingham Training, the Associated Professional Developments. My opinion is that we are past due to get rid of the actual problems and stop the academic and fiscal hemorrhage covering it up has caused. This is an opportunity for change, and our current students do not have another 15 years to wait. My correspondence is heavily cited, and it was forwarded to the board if you have any further questions.
Thank you, Seidler. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak to the board? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion. And before I ask for a motion to move this evening's agenda, is there anything that needs separating out? No, then I am going to ask for a motion for this evening's agenda. Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Herrick. Is there any discussion on any item on tonight's agenda? Yes.
I just wanted to say about the trips that are planned by community programs, I had the pleasure of being in the community programs meeting earlier, earlier this week? Last week? Last week. Everything before the holidays gets sort of a rush, but the trips that we are running on the days that school has off are phenomenal, and the only problem I had with any of it was that my seven-year-old overheard about the trip to American Dream. She heard the Zoom from the other room, and now apparently we have to let her go. But the offerings, American Dream, we have Liberty Science Center, yeah, I was looking for the, Liberty Science Center, I mean, these are trips that we would all love to be able to take our kids on, but the idea of them being able to get to go with their friends on a day off when their parents might have to work, it's just such a great opportunity for them. I just wanted to make sure we shared that.
Thank you. Mrs. Herrick.
Yes, so first, I just want to say regarding the dance team and the hiring of the burp giving the stifle for the coaches, I'm happy to see the varsity dance team come to fruition, and I commend the young ladies who came to the board months ago with a plan and worked with the athletic department and the admin team to see it through. Regarding the New Jersey CUSAC, thank you for providing me the information regarding the rating of our prior CUSAC score from 21-22. It seems when we were last evaluated, we exceeded the required passing scores for each category, including receiving a hundred for Fiscal Management, Operations, and Personnel. Currently, it seems we are waiting for the county to provide us with some of our scoring information for 24-25. Do we have a timeframe as to when we expect to hear back from the county regarding our new score?
Dr. Bowley, do you want to speak? We actually are in the CUSAC process right now, so we're submitting the DPR, which you're approving tonight, which is the preliminary part of the CUSAC process, but they'll actually do an onsite review, they'll come in. Dr. Bowley, do you have an update on when they're going to arrive?
I believe January, February would be the timeframe.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And we're, CUSAC for us is a three-year cycle, so every three years, we're evaluated on our proficiency by the state.
And just one last thing for the link it, I'm looking forward to seeing the reports that are being offered on school level and district data, as I think it can be very helpful to look at patterns and trends and areas of achievement and improvement for our students.
Dr. James.
I just wanted to direct the public's attention to community programs, number one, because I know that's come up a few times recently, there's been interest in it. So this is Title II Grant Funding to provide career training for some adult school students. I just thought some folks would be interested to know that that is happening, as usual, and that it's being approved here on this agenda, so just another exciting thing to pull out under the community programs, fun part of the agenda. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker. Mr. Gozwami. Mrs. Gwass. Mrs. Herrick. Dr. James. Mrs. Reese. President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries, leaving us to community. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble speaking this evening. Committee reports information items and for the good of the cause for the board, and I just wanted to start out, because Thanksgiving is next week, and this is a month of gratitude. We talk about people like the veterans who are the heroes among us, we've talked about our teachers in American Education Week, so I just want to say all the things I'm thankful for. And I also just wanted to make a quick statement that I'm thankful for the people that I've served on this board with, some for a long time, some for a shorter time, and I'm thankful for the new people that are coming on board, and I'm looking forward to unification and working together, because what we saw tonight, these kids and this gentleman up here who came from that are really what this is all about, and for the people that sit up here, we know that, we appreciate the people that make children like that turn into young adults like this. And so I'm thankful, and I'm optimistic, so I just wanted to make that comment, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Becker.
Thank you. Last night, the Township Recreation Park Advisory Board met, and I just wanted to bring attention to two upcoming events. This Sunday, the 24th, the East Brunswick Community Symphony will be presenting a concert at the Community Arts Center at 3:00. As of last night, there were some tickets left, and if you go to the East Brunswick Township website and go either into Events or the Recreation or the Arts and Culture page, there is a link to purchase tickets. This is, for those of us who had the privilege to attend the first symphony, it was composed of mainly professional artists. This symphony is community members, and I was told that they range in age from, I think it was 16 to 82. So really looking forward to seeing that. The other thing is, on December 7th, is the Winter Wonderland, and those who came last year, we remember so many things, and unfortunately, the weather. This year, we put in effects for very, very good, dry, very dry weather. It's going to be Saturday, December 7th, from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. There's many, many family events, a holiday market, lighting ceremony, there'll be live music, dancers, carolers, cookies with claws, seasonal children and family photos, a lot of kids' activities, food trucks, train rides, ice skating, Winter Tavern, and some more's. Get it?
I was just going to ask Dana, do we get some more's again?
That was the best.
It really was wonderful, and they have even more vendors this year, and just wanted to let everyone know about it, and it's for anyone, but very family-oriented, which of course is what East Brunswick's about. Thank you.
Just to add to what Vicki said, the Community Symphony tickets, just eight are left, so if you want, just go rush and buy it. Only eight left. I am part of that symphony. No, few is eight, no. As of yesterday night.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Reese.
I just, two things, I went to the CPAG Resource Fair, so I imagine you'll be mentioning that as well, but I just wanted to say it was a great experience, it was larger than it was previously, and a lot of credit to CPAG and to the district for putting, you know, all your support for that event, and some of the therapeutic resources that they had available, transition resources, very impressive. And I also wanted to mention, I had gone to the School Boards Conference back in October, and I attended a session on high-impact tutoring, and we offer high-impact tutoring here at the district. And for those that are not familiar with it, it basically, the definition they gave us, it refers to a structured form of tutoring that is frequent, sustained, and focused on specific academic needs. So basically, after COVID, there was, you know, loss due to COVID and learning loss in different areas, so the district has been fortunate that we received some funding of refer, back in January of '24, we received $460,000, and we were able to have tutoring in grades K to 12 in language, arts, and mathematics. And then we also had virtual tutoring opportunities at that time. And then in October of 2024, public schools again got $37,000, about that amount, for tutoring service, and so we've had 3,892 hours of tutoring for our students, so I think it's a very valuable resource to help our kids to get back to where they need to be. I mean, nationwide, it's been an issue. And also, our reading, just for a reference, 42% of the population, our third graders, are at reading level in the state, and if I'm correct, district-wide, we're at 62%, with other, some of the schools are at a higher level. So absolutely, we definitely listen to the concerns of the community, but I just want you to be assured that there are efforts in place to help our students. I even remember, we have more tutoring at the high school near the midterm, right? During midterms, maybe you can fill me in on that too, because I forget a little bit, because, right? There's, because I remember Emily used to talk about that. And that's a big help to, but, you know, midterm time to have additional help, and we use our own folks to do that, our staff are so excellent at what they do, so that makes a big difference to the kids. So thank you to the district, thank you to the teachers and the administrators who make all this possible, and I just wanted to, you know, that was one of the topics at the convention, so it's a very good convention, a lot of us went to the school board conferences, so when you see, well, what do they do there? That's some of the things that, they have different topics, all different people from all over the state with all kinds of different innovations and things like that, AI, so many different topics. All right, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Herrick.
So I also want to say, I attended the New Jersey School Boards Workshop in Atlantic City, it was a really great experience. As Ms. Reese said, we got to learn areas of student student achievement, school climate, fiscal responsibility. Talked about legislative updates throughout the state. It was a great opportunity. I'm really thankful to Mr. Juliana and his team for their assistance in making it a very smooth experience. In October, it's actually at Churchill with Mrs. Reese, we observed Living Voices, the Right to Dream presentation, which combines live performance with film to represent diverse backgrounds. This presentation followed a young African-American activist, Ruby, coming of age in the South during the Black Civil Rights Movement. Our presenter was very passionate and knowledgeable, and the class that we participated with was very engaged and asked a lot of questions. We had our community programs meeting in October. We discussed enrollment in before and after care, which is at a slight decrease from the prior year, as more parents continue to work from home or arrange care with family members. All asked programs currently have homework tutors, providing homework help at every school. Student workers are also present, which gives our high school students a chance to work with children. All staff have been provided CPR training, which includes the use of AED and an EpiPen. During our meeting, we also reviewed the number of students with IEPs attending morning and aftercare in each building, and how with the support of Louise Sultana LaRoca, community programs is looking to expand enrichment programs geared towards special education students. For after-school enrichment, program continues to include TNT Sports, Chess, Math Science, Coding, Schools Out programming, which was talked about before, regarding going to trips such as the Nickelodeon Universe at American Dream All. We also talked about ELA and how new units of study are being implemented. Some of these are really cute. One is Pet Study, which talks about focusing and caring for pets, and Owl's Pals, which is about social-emotional learning. Adult school enrollment is already over 200, and of course, all this great programming would not be possible if not for Ann Marie Gilbert and her amazing staff. So I'm thankful to all of them for being part of a great community programs meeting. As was mentioned, the Special Education Parent Advisory Group held a Resource Fair at the high school on November 13th. It had a great turnout. We were really excited, we were really happy. A huge thank you to Sarah, Jessica Rose, and the Special Education Administrative Team for putting it together. Earlier this week, I attended a workshop on creating a positive school climate. It focused on school climate teams, examining how school districts can utilize school climate teams to develop a plan that includes areas of concern, goals, tools, and intended outcomes. It spoke of board members' roles in reviewing information provided by school climate teams and supporting a positive learning environment with policy change, training, and resources as needed. I shared information provided with Dr. Valeski and Board Leadership. And on Tuesday, for American Education Week, I visited Ms. Reddy's Spanish class, where students were working on presenting their oral assignments regarding a country they would like to visit. I loved being in the classroom, watching our students learn, and I'm grateful for Ms. Reddy's willingness to share her classroom and excitement with me. Just one more thing that I wanted to touch on, because it's come up a few times, regarding the semi-form or the semi-form. So I know that this came up at our Special Education Parent Advisory Group meeting that Dr. Valeski, you were at in August. And there were some concerns, because usually how the form is presented is at an IEP meeting, it would be given to the parents and they would sign it, or we would expect to get it back signed. And these forms are one form that is, I guess, what we could say audited by the state. And it seems that we weren't meeting the number or the, like, we weren't getting them back. And so what we did when speaking with the state and having recommendations, we added it to the list of forms that everybody signs before school goes back. And I guess there has been some confusion about that form and the reason that we had changed it to that type of system, and that some were suggesting that the way we were trying to do it was to get money for services, or to not let parents know that we were trying to get money. Somehow, though, we were trying to be weird about how we were sticking it in. But really, it was a state recommendation to meet the goal of getting back to required number of forms. And so I just wanted to make that clear, because I know it's come up a few times. And just to let everybody know, you know, we do need the form signed in order to get reimbursement from Medicaid for the services that are provided through the school district. And that if, but only if the form is signed, and also signing the form, though, has no effect on a child's Medicaid coverage for services outside of school. So if it's any services used in school, it doesn't restrict them from still receiving outside services. So basically, we tried to streamline the form to make sure that it was filled out when we're meeting the criteria for getting them back. So I know that we acknowledged at the August meeting that it was confusing, and that come next year, we'll look for ways to better, I guess, have a better description where the form is, or try to find a way to explain it a little better.
Yeah, Mrs. Herrick, we talked at that meeting about actually doing a communication that was focused just on that, so parents wouldn't be confused about it, because it is in a repository of a lot of forms that parents fill out at the beginning of the school year. But giving that special attention to that, so parents understand what they were signing, and it will not impact the services that their students or their children are getting.
Thank you. Just have a happy Thanksgiving to everybody. So thank you.
Oh, Mrs. Gwos.
I just wanted to reflect in nowhere near as well-composed thoughts as yours are. I put in a lot of computer time today, but I was just trying to write a fair assessment, not a long compilation of what I thought. I wanted to say, I had the opportunity to also attend the convention, and I had always wanted to, but if you're a teacher and somebody says, "Let's go someplace that's a little further away in the middle of the week, when the schools aren't closed," it's difficult. But I managed to make it work this year. And I wanted to say, I think that the greatest value sometimes is if you go to classes and you find yourself reflecting and discussing on them days after, weeks after, which is what we've been doing for this. So it's been really useful for me. I wanted to say that the community has had a lot of outreach about things that they're concerned about, and many of the things that were spoken about tonight addressed it in one way or the other. The Resource Fair is phenomenal, and it's something that most districts don't have. And I was grateful to be able to be there. I was stunned at the community's support from before it even opened, the parking lot in front of the high school was so full. I thought there were multiple large events going on. I thought I had the wrong day for the play. There was no parking. And it was just, it was all for that. I would also like to say that I was thankful that I took pictures of all the business cards and pamphlets that I took, because I have since given them away to neighbors and community members, because in discussing it, they were very interested in what we had there. And I had a parent text me to thank me and talk about how great the experience was before we had even left the room, which is, I think, what it's all about. And I had nothing to do with it, other than that I was there and to be supportive. I also wanted to say, when people talk about mental health, the Sources of Strength Trip is such a two-way opportunity for our students. My daughter, who isn't here, so I can say this, my daughter had an opportunity to be a part of that trip. And it's not just good for the kids that they go to see in the younger grades, but it's also good for the high school students to be able to mentor other students and to be able to share in this way. So I like what we're doing there. I want to say, Jason Reynolds and Kwame Alexander, I'm going to have a fangirl moment here, I'm an English teacher, the opportunity to have Jason Reynolds and Kwame Alexander in any way speaking to our students or near our students is phenomenal. I know a teacher that was able to obtain a grant elsewhere to get them in, and it was incredibly expensive, or just Jason Reynolds, and they had to sign all kinds of things. Nobody else was allowed in the room. They weren't allowed to video. It's very, very hard to get them. If you don't know who Jason Reynolds is, he is a phenomenal young writer, whose whole idea is to make reading cool, that kids should want to read. And his description of his writing is that everything that he writes is a love letter to kids, and kids are so responsive to him. And he talks about real struggles that children have, about, you know, racism and prejudice and stereotypes. And I've never met a student who didn't want to read what he had to write after they'd read a little bit. So I'm glad that we're putting that out there too, for the kids. I wanted to say that when we showed the softball and field hockey complex, my favorite part did not get mentioned, but there's water-filling stations up there. If you're a parent watching a sport, water-filling stations is phenomenal, because you would, you would believe, if you have kids playing, you know how many water bottles they're carrying to sports. It's a lot of weight. So I was happy to see that we put that up there, so they're not throwing away water bottles. And there was one more thing. And I'm so grateful that the Powderpuff Game was moved, because it was supposed to be tonight, my daughter's playing, and I was going to miss it. So I'm really sorry about the rain. I'm so excited. And happy Thanksgiving.[1766.26][1766.26](applause) Okay. This was fun. But now, all good things must come to an end. So I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Becker. Mrs. Gwos. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Absent? Motion carries. Thank you. Happiest of Thanksgivings. Hug your family tight, and we will see you next time.